All right, it's 8:30. We'll call this morning's meeting to order. Moving into the approval of agenda.
Move to approve.
Have a motion to approve.
Second.
And a second. Any other further comments? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Citizens to be heard. Seeing none, we'll move on to the approval of bills and vouchers.
Move to approve.
Motion to approve by Frank.
Second.
Second. Any other comments? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item number two is our final review of the commissioners' committee assignments for 2018. Thank you for making the changes that we requested last week.
I see at the bottom that it's township meetings and small cities meetings, aren't there anymore? Is that...
Those, it looks like those were added into our individual assignments.
Oh. Township officers, okay.
Instead of at the bottom, the rural cities.
Rural cities, yes.
And county, and then the township officers' meetings.
Well, I didn't look at that better and I wouldn't mention that. Okay. Thank you for doing that.
That's okay. Anything else? I know Commissioner Haney is ill today, so he may have a question next week.
Move to approve the committee assignments.
Have a motion to approve. And a second. Any other comments or questions? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Let's see, our next couple ones are public hearings. Brian, do you want to do the land management pieces?
Oh, sure, absolutely. Good morning, Madam Chair and members of the commission. What you have before you is a memo that was drafted for the PIC committee. So this has gone for the committee, and then I just revised it a little bit for the board. So I guess that's my way of saying that it has gone before the PIC committee for review and discussed, I guess, in pretty much detail. And I think there was pretty good support coming out of the PIC committee. I don't believe there was any issues, or I try and remember then if there was in regards to it. You'll see in the memo that we have, we formed somewhat of a land management committee made up of the department heads to discuss the possibilities of forming a land management committee before we brought it to you. This is something, I guess, that I know some other counties have done, and I've thought about it for a long time and to see if there was any interest in being, I don't want to say better coordinated, but I think when we look at the recipients, the citizens, when they come to the courthouse building and they go down to second floor for the recorder's office and the assessor's office and land management functions of the auditor treasures office or the auditor's office, and then they come up on third floor for the planning and zoning. And as we started talking about these reasons that this split should be together for the convenience of the customer, it became more obvious that these need to be pushed together for better communication. In fact, it was Tim Magnuson that said, he said he had talked to a county that had just done this, and they said they didn't realize how siloed their departments in the land management function had functioned until they brought them together and they started communicating much better about what was going on in the land management field. And I thought that spoke volumes of what we're trying to do here. So what, again, I guess we could certainly go through some of the issues that we discussed, but one of the, one of the main issues was the front counter over here where land management functions take place, and then right next to it are human resource functions, and the two are not a very good mix standing in the hallway together. And that kind of, that's why human resources was involved in this as well. But, so we just feel that it's a good step in moving the land management office, or correction, the zoning office down to second floor within the assessor's office. In fact, there's even two separate windows down there that we can label either, you know, the assessing department and the zoning department. And there's certainly adequate room within the space. We do need to do some modifications, and we're meeting after the board meeting today, and I understand Commissioner Haney is not going to be here. So we wanted to talk about some of the costs involved in moving those people down. There will be some wiring that needs to take place and things. So really, we'll entertain any questions from you in regards to that. If I can talk about the action plan that needs to take place, there's lots of elements that need to be discussed, and we have discussed a lot of them, but part of the planning and zoning office was the environmental office, and that included the two food and beverage inspectors, Bruce and Kent, over in the family service center. And we centered our discussion around that quite a bit, too, because not only in planning and zoning, but there's also some inspections there. And that function we will need to work through because right now they perform both functions. And we felt that that food and beverage inspection really needs to be under the direction of public health. And so we will need to swing that just a little bit to directly report to public health. Right now, it's listed on the director of public health's job description as coordinated function, and that will reverse. It will be a direct report to her and with coordinating functions with Tim then in planning and zoning to work through that. Also with moving planning and zoning down to second floor, we want to talk, you know, we think personalities are important and how they fit together, and the assessor's office currently does have an office manager and then an administrative assistant down in that office, and that will flow under the office manager's authority. In other words, the administrative assistant there with coordinating functions with Tim. So those are several of the job descriptions that need to be addressed in aligning this, and plus we'll align the budgets. We don't feel at this point it costs any more money and we'll be delivering a better service. The one thing that, coming to you folks for, and not only to inform you about it and get your consensus on it, but also there is a slight change in the organizational chart, and that is that planning and zoning was under central administration. And if you look at the planning, or the organizational chart, and coming from the left where you see juvenile detention assessor, highway department, then planning and zoning would be for now standing alone on that line with a direct report to the county administrator. And it was a direct report under the central administration, but, so it just changes the line. Now, if you folks feel that this is working out and in the future, there may be then a land management office that we're planning and zoning, and the assessor and the recorder and functions of the auditor's office may be under one roof, and that could be under one office down in there, because if you look at the space with the recorder's office, the assessor's office, and how that flows, you could have a pretty functionable land management office. But that's for future discussions as we move forward. We feel this should move in steps to make sure it's going in the right direction, so...
Thank you. Any comments on this? From PIC?
Well, I, they were, we had, we had all of the people in the room when we talked about this, and I don't know, based on this morning with the time that this was originally scheduled for, if any of those department heads had planned on coming to talk or not.
No, I don't think so.
Okay, all right. But it certainly made sense to us, I guess, to move forward with this.
Yeah, I think it's a good move, and, you know, put all the other, there's space down there to do it, there's just, open up some space up here for other things if we do need it, so. No, I think it's a good move, and it's going to help the residents of Clay County do that , you don't have to go to two different places.
I think that's probably one of the best things that could come out of this, is to streamline the process. Before I was involved with this board, having built a new house in Clay County, that process was very confusing, and knowing what window to go to, and I think if we can reflect on that and try to make it a simplified process and maybe, you know, like I said, streamline it, it's, can only help the process, so... Any other? Not, I think we're looking for action on the approval.
Right.
The chart.
Approval of the organizational chart. So moved.
We have a motion to approve the chart.
Second.
Second. Any other further comments? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
We're still about four minutes ahead of schedule. Kevin, do you have any additional report?
I have just one, I believe, let me look here. I just, we had a correctional facility and LAC update or construction meeting yesterday, and I think that, you know, all is going well there. I think the thing that we, there are two items that we spent the most time talking on yesterday. One was the, the, having to redo the, some of the security functions that are going to go on between the jail and the courthouse and the law enforcement center. All of the stuff for the old jail is outdated, and all of that's going to have to be pulled and redone, and so we spent a lot of time talking about that. I know Mark Sloan is working together with the electricians and the IT people to get that all worked out. The, let's see, the, we're looking at getting bids in soon on the furniture for, primarily for the law enforcement center. I think that, Brian, I think that we're scheduled for the end of this month, the 23rd, to have those bids come in, so that will be reviewed and brought before this board for that. I think other than that, everything is going on schedule. There's going to be a little bit of a campus interruption coming up in a week or two, and that is going to be in regards to the remaining jail cells are going to be brought in. It's not going to be as significant as the first disruption that occurred when the first set of cells came in, but, and again, I think they're looking at that also happening around the 20th to the 23rd of this month, I think is, and I think it was going to be a two-week period. And I know, Darren, you've been involved with the parking issues and stuff, and I think there's going to be some slight disruptions on where parking can be, so I'm sure you'll be, you know, working through Brian, you guys will be informed to let our staff know. That's all that I have.
Still a moment, do you have a report?
No report.
Go ahead.
I, I just had, I had Minnesota rural counties caucus in Alexandria yesterday, and we got our budget approved and everything done in terms of some general business items for 2018, and then talked about some of the priorities. I don't know if anybody's got any issues they want MRC to work on this year, but some of the main things we're looking at are support, we're going to have active support for AMC's mental health bonding proposal, which I think is important to all rural counties. Some more issues regarding reliable broadband across the state of Minnesota. They're going to have some support for these tax court issues that are going on that are affecting counties, and then long-term transportation funding issues. That was it.
Okay, thank you. It's now 8:45. Brian, we'll take your 8:45 items, so I'll look for a motion to open a public hearing.
So moved.
We have a motion?
Right.
And a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. We are open. Mr. Berg.
Good, good morning again, Madam Chair and members of the commission. What you have before you today is a resolution for your approval, and what the resolution is about is the last, oh gosh, it's been about six years now, I think, since you passed a abatement act, in other words, where you waive the, well, you abate the property tax for the first two years of new construction, and it's been renewed, I think, twice. It's a two-year program, and what you have before you is a whole bunch of parcels, and this has been published in the paper, that you, if with your approval, you're abating the taxes on these parcels for those two years of new construction. And the amount of the abatement is $452,196. And again, just, I guess, I think you're, you guys are all well aware of it, but what you're doing is you're encouraging construction of new homes and things in Clay County. And I say Clay County because it's supported by the local jurisdictions as well and several of the communities. I don't believe any of the rural townships endorse this policy, but the cities have, City of Morehead initiated this idea, and Holly, Barnesville, I think Glendon, Dilworth have endorsed this as well, and you support their, their programs in that, so ask for your approval.
Glendon, I think, is moving towards it, correct?
Excuse me?
Glendon is moving towards it.
Yeah, I think you're right.
And Dilworth is, and then I think actually that came out of the small cities conversation, that they were going to.
I think you're right.
Move forward and pursue that.
Yeah, yeah, I think you're right. Glendon is not engaged in it right now, so... So this is a public hearing for any comments or questions in regards to that.
Is there any public that wants to speak on this, the hearing? Any other commissioners?
No, I was just reading that Dilworth, I was just looking at Dilworth's legals in the other day in the paper, Monday's paper, and it was surprising how many people are taking advantage of this program, and I think it's really benefited the county, you know, just all the building that's going on, and it's just, I mean, when you see this list here, it's just, it's amazing. You know, the program must be working. Hopefully, it is because of this program, I mean, part of it, so...
Was it a 10-year initially? When will these expire?
Two years.
Well, I know these are two years, but when will...
It's renewed every year.
Will we renew the policy on it?
We have to renew it every year.
Every year we renew it.
Yeah. Madam Chair, I do believe it's a two-year program, and you renew it every year, yeah. Yeah, okay.
Any other comments?
No, I think, I think we have to renew the plan every year.
Okay, yeah.
But the benefit is a two-year benefit.
Yeah.
But I think, because...
It keeps moving forward.
It keeps moving one year off, so I think we do it every year. It's, it's either one or two years.
[laughing] That's right.
It may be beneficial just for us to see what that split is geographically in the county. I think that would be interesting to kind of see what, where these are trending, you know.
We'll certainly get to that.
The majority on a certain corridor or not.
Good point.
Anything else?
I'll move to close the hearing.
We have a motion to close the public hearing?
Aye.
Second. Any other comments? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Now you need approval of the...
Resolution. I'll move to approve the resolution.
We have a motion to approve Resolution 2018-2.
Second.
And a second. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
We're still a little ahead of schedule. I, last week, attended the MetroCog Executive Committee meeting. We're basically in discussion, we have a really good pool of candidates for that executive director, so we'll start interviews this next week. I think there were eight pretty, pretty good candidates, that we will do interviews with those eight, so going forward, we'll see. And I guess that's kind of all we really discussed. Brian, do you have committees or meetings that you want to cover? We're, we're really quick today.
Okay.
She's doing a good job for, for full meetings, so...
Doing really good, yes. Thank you, Madam Chair. The one that I have here, I received a letter yesterday from Lakeland Mental Health, and they said that the, as far as your appointment to the Lakeland Mental Health Board, Clay County Board of Commissioners will need to decide whether to appoint, reappoint Mike McCarthy to, as a layperson to the Lakeland Mental Health. So you folks don't have to do that today, but just want to inform all of you of it.
Hey, you know, he's really a fantastic member and represents Clay County really well, I think.
We can do it today?
Sure.
Well, I'll make that motion.
We have a motion to reappoint Mike McCarthy to Lakeland Mental Health?
Second.
And a second. Any further comments or questions? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you. We'll respond then, Madam Chair, to their request for that. Several personnel evaluations, I, beginning of the year, it seems like I have about six in the month of January, and I got four of those covered, so keeping up with that. Had a, I guess, interview with the Barnesville reporter, again, doing an update on the correctional facility and the law enforcement center. Head management team meeting last Thursday morning, moving along quite well in regards to that. Construction meeting, Commissioner Campbell's covered that quite well. The additional point that maybe I'd want to make, we talked quite a bit about a change order as well yesterday involving the electrical to the individual cells, and then the pigtail that they are putting in there that will adapt to the new pods that are, are put in, and what happened with the cells, they're coming with one pigtail coming out of the cells for electrical, and our, I'll say, our jail staff really wanted a separate pigtail for the nightlights, that they can be separate from the rest of the electrical. So dealing with that, and when you multiply that times about, you know, 150 cells, that adds quite a bit of, of some cost, I'll say, so we're working through that.
Questions on that?
About the other question on that. And then I've got just one other thing that I, there was some discussion last time about the new positions that were added in 2017, and I sent you out an email, but that got kind of disconfigured with it. So I've just got a handout here.
Great, thank you.
If you want to have any more discussion on it. It lays out a little bit better on the format. I'll say the new positions in 2017 that were added. As you can see in social services, that went before the PIC committee, and there was no levy dollars increase in those positions, those two positions. Public health, no new level levy dollars. It was a case manager for the detox center, and there was one case manager, and that was in connection with the social service request, that was in December, I believe. And then the county attorneys, I made an error in that when I sent it out to you, it wasn't Haney that was the commissioner at that time, that was presented in the 2016 year for the 2017 budget. Ingasol was on the board at that time, and that was presented twice to the board because we came back and we had worked out a phase in, so to speak. One was going to be added in March, and one was going to be added in, in September of 2017, and that's what took place. And then, of course, the correctionals and the juvenile center have been discussed pretty extensively and came through the, the construction committees on that, so... But, and this will be a topic then for the next PIC committee and...
Right.
On how we arrive at that, so... And with that, Mr., Madam Chair, that concludes my report.
Okay. Do we have any comments on this form? Clarification? Nope, all right. Thank you. Well, Tim, is yours an open hearing? We should probably wait.
Yeah, it's not a public hearing, so we don't have to open here.
We don't have to.
But I, I don't, but I think...
I think you're...
I'm just getting ready for everybody that's interested.
Mr. Bannerman, do you know if anyone else is coming? James, do you have anyone else coming from the township?
No.
Okay. I guess we'll go ahead and take this nine o'clock item. I think everyone that's here was at the planning commission. Good morning, Tim.
On that township that was, is that Riverton or Kurtz Township, in our letter?
It's supposed to be Kurtz Township.
Did I miss that?
Says Riverton.
What we're discussing here today is a single-lot subdivision. Single-lot plat.
The computer will make us pan time.
Well, I was in here earlier and it worked just fine.
That's all right.
No, there are the grandkids along the way. That's, my grandkids aren't quite there yet.
Yours are running.
Anyway, what we're discussing here today is a single-lot plat in Kurtz Township. Excuse me, answer. Approximately 40-acre parcel. This is what the plat will look like. This is Highway 75 on the west side. Highway 75 along the west edge, has frontage here and frontage down here. The MIG South subdivision is located just north of here. That used to be the old FM Egg facility, if you guys remember that. It's no longer there, there is a, well, I'll show you another slide. Anyway, there's a residential site located right here, and then this site down here has a storage building on it. Give you an idea as to how it's laid out, and like I said, this is the MIG South subdivision. This is a concrete plant right here. This facility here is a company that deals with renewable energy. I'm not exactly sure in what capacity they're, they deal with renewable energy. This is the proposed site, again, this is the, this is the Bannerman property here. This is a storage building here. Access to this site will be off Highway 75 approximately right in here. We're doing a single-lot plat because the, the owners or the proposed owners are looking at applying for a conditional or an interim use permit for a commercial-type use. They would like to utilize about 20 acres of the 40-acre property to stockpile sand, gravel, clay, dirt for use in the construction industry, possibly also concrete rubble, stockpile there, and then crush on periodic basis. So what we're talking about today is just approval of the split of the property, not any particular use that might be proposed, because those uses we'd have to come back to the planning commission anyway. This is a zoning map, it's in an egg general zone. This MIG subdivision is actually zoned commercial. We changed the zoning on that when we did the plat of the property, because it was intended to be utilized as commercial. Give you an idea as to the impact of, again, this would be a use, but there's residences to the north up here on Highway 75, there's residences to the east, some to the south, and a couple to the west over here. There's residences to the east, some to the south, and a couple to the west over here. Any activity on this property, again, would be regulated through the planning commission by either a conditional use or an interim use permit. So what the request is today is just to approve the single-lot plat, the split of the property. And that's what the planning commission has reviewed this, or at their meeting, last meeting, reviewed this and did approve the recommendation to pass, the recommendation to, for approval to the county board. So that's where we're at. I do know that Mr. Bannerman is here, the gentleman who lives right in here. The township is represented, essentially.
Applicants.
Applicants represented here as well. So if you've got any questions, it'll be-
Any questions for Tim? If not, would the applicants like to say anything? I apologize for not asking if you were waiting on anyone else. You can step up to the microphone if you would like.
What we're looking at doing out there, the reason the parcel ended up being 40 acres because that's what the farmer wanted to sell. He didn't wanna just sell 10 acres. And so we ended up buying the whole 40 acres or proposed to buy the 40 acres. We only, at this time, we only plan on using about five acres up in the northeast corner of the property. So that's what we're looking at, to do some stockpiling, some sand, gravel, clay, dirt, and some crush, crush some concrete once every year or every two years. Once in a while, stockpile just a little bit of concrete.
And you did say to the planning commission, your plan was to lease that back to the farmer to keep the rest tillable?
Yes, I do got a sketch here if anybody wants to look at roughly what we're gonna do, if anybody's interested in looking at that. It's pretty simple, pretty simple sketch, a couple sketches here, what, what it's doing there.
Thank you. Anyone else have questions for him? If not, James, I know the township was gonna talk about this. Did you have any issues that came up?
Not for plat.
Okay, not in regards to the plat?
No.
Okay, thank you. Did the neighbors have any thing that they'd like to state? Welcome to come up to the podium if you do. Introduce yourself for the board as well, I apologize.
Dan Moore, I live in the property on the northeast corner there. And I guess our concern, and I realize it has to come at a later date probably, but I'll still state the concern now, it wasn't so much about the stockpiling or that. The original thing, the original, the way it came out was proposed to have an asphalt batch plant there and concrete crushing. And that's a major concern to my neighbor who is just to the south of me, is sick today, Ken Cading. But it's a major concern to us as far as the value of our property, the amount of traffic, smell, the timeframe that they run during the day. So that's our concern. It's not so much the stockpiling, but the concrete crushing and the asphalt plant was a major concern.
Okay. Any other questions?
Well, the concrete crushing, wasn't it just supposed to be once every, once every year or once every year?
Yes, I was gonna add to that. That's something that's probably, we're a small company, we're not a big, we're not gonna be doing highways or nothing. So it's possible we might only crush once every two years. And that would only be a three-year, four-day process, and that could be done on a time, I agree, time scheduling, a certain time has to be done. It could be done in the winter months or something.
I think we could add, I mean, when the conversation happens-
Yeah.
-you know, when you bring it back to the planning, those can definitely be conditions that we, we really wanna take into effect the neighbors' concerns.
Yep. So our main use for the property is to stockpile dirt and clay, and I'll-
Thank you. Anyone have any comments in regards to the parcel split? If not, what are the, this board's wishes?
I'll make a motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve the platted subdivision by Commissioner Gross?
Second.
And a second? Comments?
Yeah, I, I know this is just one, one step in this process, and I know that when it gets to the uses, that has to go back again. And I certainly would encourage you as a, as a neighbor to voice your concerns like you did today at that aspect. And, you know, as was said, when it comes to crushing of concrete, some of those things that could interfere with, with your individual residents, I think there can be restrictions put on that too to minimize that a great deal. So that's just one thing. But I would just encourage you to follow through to this, on this next step.
I just wanna clarify that the memorandum is Kurtz Township, just to clarify that.
Okay.
Make sure that's changed. Any other comments or questions? If not, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tim. All right, we've already done committee assignments. The thing that I will note, that the joint powers committee that Commissioner Campbell and I were on, now Commissioner Haney and Commissioner Campbell are on, are having a press conference this morning to address the Wear Blue for Law Enforcement Appreciation Day that we will be jointly celebrating. So if you can make it to that, do that.
What time is that at?
It's at 11 o'clock at Probst Field. The last two years, we've done the proclamation to wear blue in support of law enforcement.
Oh, okay, when is that?
That press conference is at 11 o'clock at Probst Field today.
This morning. Yeah, we've got, we've got, some of us have meetings we have to be at. But you'll be there, right?
Yeah. Any other comments or questions? If not, we are adjourned.